We ready? Okay, welcome to this regular meeting of the Delray Oak City Council and also welcome to our newly renovated council chambers. We've got the new graphics and sign behind us and new beam and fan above us. And also we upgraded the audio visual, so hopefully those who are watching remotely enjoy the upgraded experience. And I want to thank city manager and the city staff for for making this happen. It's it's fantastic.
Mostly the staff.
Mostly the staff. Can I roll call, please? Here. Here, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next item is public comment. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There is a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is now open. Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Our next item is proclamations and we have three proclamations that I'm very excited about. I'll start with the municipal clerks appreciation week first. And that's municipal clerks week was earlier this month from four May to ten May. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And is the oldest amongst public servants. It provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and the agencies of the government at other levels. And whereas the professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality. Rendering equal services to all and serves as the information center. On functions of local government and community and continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of city hall. Through participation in education programs, seminars and workshops. And whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Therefore, I Scott Donaldson, mayor of Delray Oaks, on behalf of the city council. Do hereby recognize professional municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks. Karen Manami, Laura Batra. And Stacy Matthews, for your vital services that they perform. And their exemplary dedication to the community that they represent. Signed this twentieth day of May twenty twenty five. All right, our next proclamation I'm equally excited about. It's honoring National Public Works Week, which is actually going on this week and goes until Sunday. And that one reads, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance. To the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well being of the people of Delray Oaks. And these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works works professionals. Such as Ron Fuji and Sherman Low. Who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment. And solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And it's in the public interest for these citizens, civic leaders and children of Delray Oaks. To gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works. And public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty five marks the sixty sixth annual National Public Works Week. Therefore, I Scott Donaldson, mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby recognize National Public Works Week. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association. And government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies. Designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees. And to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Signed this twentieth day of May twenty twenty five. All right, and for our final proclamation and celebration of June as pride month, I would like to turn it over to council member John Uwe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like appreciate for the acknowledgement, the recognition and the and valuing the richness and the diversity of our community. So this is really truly an honor for me to read a proclamation on behalf of our dear mayor. Yeah. So a proclamation, a recognition of pride month of June twenty twenty five. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, work, play and raise a family. And whereas Delray Oaks has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and questioning LGBTQ plus community. And is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equity for all its residents. And whereas many of the residents and business owners within the city of Delray Oaks. Who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Delray Oaks is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial. Gender and sexual identities of its residents and business community members. All of which contribute to the character, talent, economy and leadership of our city. Whereas while critical steps have been made toward full LGBTQ plus equity and equality. Members of our national, state and local community still face discrimination, exclusion and prejudice simply for being who they are. And for whom they love. And whereas discrimination against people from the LGBTQ plus community around the world. Make it imperative for cities like Delray Oaks to stand up and show support for our LGBTQ plus residents. And whereas we respect and celebrate the richness and variety of cultures, values, traditions and uniqueness. As they contribute to the tapestry of our community. And whereas each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity. Support or all fellow community members, prevent the spread of misinformation. And reject hate and bias in all forms, which will make Delray Oaks a stronger and healthier community. And whereas June was chosen as National Pride Month to commemorate the nineteen sixty nine protests. And demonstrations in response to raids at the Stonewall Inn in New York's Greenwich Village. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which LGBTQ community and allies come together. In various celebrations of pride. And now therefore be it resolved that I Scott Donaldson, mayor of Delray Oaks. Do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ plus pride month. And encourage all residents to actively promote, support and help build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Signed this twentieth day of May twenty twenty five, Scott Donaldson, mayor. Thank you. Thank you. And I and I also would like to invite everyone on June first, we're gonna have our pride flag raising here in city hall and we're gonna have a simple party. Yeah, so so I I hope to see everyone. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, John. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda and there's one item. C. C three, we received some updated rate fees from our green waste recovery hauler, so. I want to push that one to the next meeting when we have the updated information. If there's. If everyone's fine with that, that's what I would like to do. Okay, so with that, are there any other items that the council would like to pull from consent? Okay, seeing none, are there any items from the public that you would like to see pulled? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Next item's old business, which we have none, so I'll move on to new business and that's the first reading of an ordinance amending municipal code. Chapter fifteen point zero eight by adding section fifteen point zero one zero designated fire hazard safety zones and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So as everybody knows, we contract our fire services with our sister agency, the city of Seaside. And the acting chief, maybe permanent chief soon, Paul Blaha is here to present the maps to us. Thanks, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council member, city manager, city attorney. I'm Paul Blaha, Senator and Fire Chief for Seaside Fire Department. And this evening I'm presenting item seven A in ordinance proposing amendments to chapter fifteen point zero eight of the city of Delray Oaks Municipal Code. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, following years of devastating wildfires across California, resulting in the loss of thousands of homes, properties and lives, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill sixty three. This legislation mandates the adoption of all three fire hazard severity zones within the local responsibility area. Previously, only the very high fire hazard severity zones were required. Next slide. In March, we received the a transmittal from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Designating updated fire hazard severity zones. These updated zones offer a more accurate assessment of wildfire risk, utilizing modern climate data and advanced fire behavior modeling. Next slide. California Governor, California government codes require local jurisdictions to identify, adopt and enforce all three fire hazard severity zones. Slide. In chapter fifteen of the Delray Oaks Municipal Code, section fifteen point zero eight point ten is currently titled reserved. And will be retitled fire hazard severity zone designation. And staff recommends adopting the fire hazard severity zones map and amending chapter fifteen point zero eight of the municipal code by adding section fifteen point zero eight ten. Titled fire hazard severity zone designation. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, chief. I'll start with the council first with any comments or questions. I'll start down at the end with council member Uwe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, chief, for being here and for briefing us with this. I just have one question. So with this designation. What would be the implications? What what should we be doing as a city in order to, you know?
Yeah, as a city, the building official will start enforcing chapter seven, even though the city doesn't have any very high severity zone ratings in it. It does have high and and moderate and in the high or the high section, which is the orange section on the map. It requires chapter seven A of the California Building Code to be followed for all new construction and anything that involves. Remodel work or anything like that. Also, it would it wouldn't hurt to provide defensible space around the structures. Realizing that you're not going to get the hundred foot buffer on a lot of the properties in the city. However, at least the zero to five feet from a structure, you should try to make that an ember intrusion zone. And you just hardscape it, just basically concrete and rock. Keep all combustibles away from the buildings and windows.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Yeah, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Hallack.
Thank you, Mayor. I had just a couple of questions along the same lines. So in on page ninety two, city manager's recommendation is to to adopt this this resolution, but. It was Delray Oaks specifically is designated as moderate high fire hazard as per the the most recent report, the updated report.
Correct.
But state law requires that we. We include within our ordinances all three. So even though it is those conditions do not exist, is there a reason why we must? Could conditions increase to to potentially be a high, very high? Or the the reason I ask is we we've done extensive work to mitigate fire fuels and such successfully, beautifully. Groomed the city in hopes that well, first of all, for, you know. To protect lives and property, the safety of lives and property first, but and I realize that it's not the the purview of this council or the city. To dictate insurance rates, for example, but one of the the benefits. Cited was that in doing so that the homeowner would not be so subjected to rate increases or possibly being denied insurance. So I'm wondering if this is this poses any detriment. Should an insurer or any other entity look at the ordinances, you know, in a reflection of of this region, our immediate local region. And then someone might suffer declination or increased rates accordingly. So is that it? Is that necessary? I'm reading it as yes, that we have to include all three. But there's just a little confusion for me that as per the maps, we don't have all three. There's just one red zone somewhere up. South of sixty eight, east of Olmsted. So but it but it is it is necessary to to include all classifications. Could you kind of expound on that?
Yes, sir. The California government codes, the. Five one one seven eight, five five one one seven eight point five, five one one seven nine. Require the designation and adoption of all three fire hazard class severity zones. Prior to this, the city of Delray Oaks only had one red section and it was on the corner of General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road. I can speak a little bit for the city of Seaside. We didn't have any color and now we have all three. To get to your point about fuel mitigation work and that you have been from the park across the street. All along South Boundary for years, you've been cutting the weeds and doing fuel mitigation. However, that doesn't take in consideration the fuel modeling. The fuel modeling was based on Ember Cast. Up to one mile away. The ember can fly and that's how the modeling they came up with. So out in the impact zone on the worst day possible for the Monterey Peninsula. When it's basically I like to use the example, when the Santa Ana winds are down in LA. It changes our wind direction towards to an kind of a north direction coming out of the south a little bit. And the weather's warm. And so on, that's when they are potentially saying Ember Cast with blowing into Delray Oaks. Depending on if the fires broke out down across the street from Cannon Delray and sixty eight and one of those vacant properties. As for the insurance premiums, this does not affect the insurance premiums. Insurance companies do not use the Cal Fire Office Safe for our Fire Marshal fuel modeling for it. One of the questions. That I took off the questions answer. Is does the fire hazardous burning, fire hazardous severity zone maps affect homeowners insurance? The answer is no. Cal Fire Hazard Maps do not affect insurance rates or availability per Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara. So the insurance companies use a whole different modeling system. And I was told it's even worse than the modeling system that Cal Fire uses or off the state fire marshal. It's a lot more stricter.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm sure the community would be interested in those details and understood wind currents, topography. Potentially from surrounding areas could impact our zones, even though they are not deemed or classified as very high. So very understood. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, council member Shirley.
Yeah. Hi, thank you, Chief Blaha. Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
Um, so I guess this is a question for our city manager and I I've mentioned this before, but I think just so that everyone knows. So we have in our city right now, we have high and and moderate areas. For those high areas, they will need to follow those fire safe building codes. Are our building codes already established, ready for those? To be those fire codes that are needed for new construction and remodeling that will meet that need?
Yes, because we follow the California State Building Codes.
Okay.
Those are the updated codes, which are actually, I think, updated again this year, right?
Correct. They're updating in January this year to the twenty five.
Okay, okay, good. And then do you know how often Cal Fire will update this fire hazard map? Is this something that they'll do once every five years?
Well, the last time they updated it was in two thousand and seven to eleven.
Okay.
So it was due to all the devastating fires throughout California from that time, even prior to that, if you recall the Oakland Hills Fire. Chapter seven A of the building code was basically written from the Oakland Hills Fire and that was in nineteen ninety one. So you, you know, I'm not to answer that question, I don't know if they're gonna update in five years, ten years or fifteen years.
Okay, okay. And then just a a comment, I think in the Acorn, the next edition of the Acorn, it would be really good if we could start talking to residents about having that fire defensible space. Just recently, my husband and I walked out in our backyard and our oak tree is a little close to the house and just, you know, thinking, okay, where do we need to cut it? I think if everyone was a little bit more aware of that, you know, five to ten foot space, I think it would be really, really beneficial.
So I have a flyer on how to prepare your home and it's from Firewise from NFPA. We ordered a hundred of them. They're free of charge. And I couldn't order a hundred more for the city of Delray Oaks and I'll drop them off here at the front out counter. And you could and you can hand them out as your wishes. There's also a much larger one, poster size. But what I would like to say is you can go to the Office of State Fire Marshal website and. And I get all my information off that website. And, and Ready for Wildfire website as well. It's a very good website to go to, but if you want something in, we actually have these also Firewise pamphlets at the station as well. So I'll order some for City of Delray Oaks and drop them off.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Berger.
Chief, thank you very much. This is really informative. I think there are a lot of great questions, by the way. I don't have any questions other than sort of respond to the insurance thing. My neighbors haven't complained. I think our house is pretty tidy. But our oaks were over the roof, too close to the structure. And then we had a questionable roof issue, which was a non-issue. But the way the, and we, so we received a, a cancellation notice, a non-renewal at the time of renewal. Excuse me. So I went and without, I believe you can cut back to four inches in diameter without a permit. So we were able to do that successfully. I took really good pictures of the roof and the oaks and everything. But the way they determine this is by flying drones around. They hire an agency that'll, or, or contract that'll come around. And fly drones in the area covering their insured homes. And, and they're, they're doing their own risk management. Luckily, with the information and with my broker. We were able to clarify everything, our policy being stated, and we don't have any, any red tags on ours. But it's something to be very aware of. A few of our other neighbors have received cancellation notices. And so, yeah, this is, this is enlightening and good to know.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. You know, if it wasn't a very high, you would be required to remove that tree branches, I believe, ten to twenty feet away from your residence. And you could work with the city if they have a tree ordinance or tree policy about cutting. I, you're right, it's four, it's either, it's four inches or up to six. I myself live out in North County. And several years I had an inspection, and I trimmed an oak tree branch off the, my shop garage. And it was much bigger than six inches. But it's not on my garage anymore.
If you drive out to Carmel Valley and look at the homes over there, they are all cleared out. The brush is cleared out over twenty-five feet. And rarely do you see a home that has a, a overhanging tree, and parts of the valley are very lush, so.
Right.
It's nice to see that that is happening, especially in the valley, so.
Yeah, we, we encourage all residences and even city property to trim your trees up six to eighty, six to eight feet off the ground. And, you know, so it's, they call it laddering effect. If there's a vegetation fire on the ground, and it comes to a tree and the branch is hanging down, it's going to catch a tree, and it's going to crown fire. And that's where you're going to get your ember cast. And out in, out in the impact zone, there are some, not big trees, but there's a lot of vegetation. That on a good day, or on the worst day, the wind will just blow those ember casts into Seaside. And Delray Oaks and Monterey Peninsula. We saw with the Carmel Fire, we saw with the River Fire. You know, all it takes is a dry day and lightning.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
All right. I'll take it out to the public if there are any public comments or questions. Okay, Laura. Oh, yes, please.
Just one thing to add, since my comments somewhat coincided with Councilmember Berger's. Did your insurance company specifically cite those conditions as being fire hazards? Or I think that can contribute insect infestation, tree fall, whatnot? Because that would contradict with what the chief spoke to us about. I mean, is that something they're looking at specifically, yea or nay?
Initially, they didn't even give us a reason. They just said. So, so, so when we, when I, when I asked my, my broker to investigate, the response was yes. It was because the, the, they thought there was a dip in the, in the roof. We have a flat roof, rock roof. They thought there was a dip in the roof, which meant there would have been pooling if there was any rain, and then that could cause ulcerative conditions, including mold and, and actual collapse or failure of the roof. The, the trees were a fire condition. And also a structural condition in case a tree were to fall over.
As seen by your insurance.
Yes.
That was cited as, as.
That was the explanation they gave my brokers. Yeah, it's, it's, it's all about protecting their asset.
Okay.
They look at it as their asset.
Thanks for being clear. Thanks again, Chief.
Well, you're welcome. The Office of Insurance Commissioners, the website, they have a lot of information about the California. Fire hazard severity zones, as well as what they can and can't do. And I have a representative email and phone number and contact if they need them, and I can put them in touch with that individual. Yes.
This is something else that's really important to know, and this is from the, the California Fire Commissioner, or Insurance Commissioner, sorry. If there's a fire or wildfire within two miles of your home linear. They can cancel you just based on the fact there is a fire zone so close to your home. So for us to keep in mind, thinking about like Fort Ord property. It is unfortunately a tremendous liability for us if something were to happen, multiple liabilities. And it would cause a potential for us to lose our ability to insure our homes the, the traditional way.
Thank you for that. Chief, thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it. Laura, is it possible to pull up that map? Okay, and, and while Laura is doing that, I want to recognize our Public Works Director for coordinating. The grants that funded all of the work that you see. Not only being done, but has been done within the city limits. To include our Fort Ord property, coordinating for the Gabalon crews that are out of Solidad Prison. So as you look at that map, you'll see a lot of the moderate areas. Are located on the former Fort Ord, around the Frog Pond area, and then farther south as you. As it borders the airport property. So not only has Ron been extremely diligent in getting the funding for that. And executing all the work that needs to be done there. He also coordinated for Gabalon crews to go into the Frog Pond. And clear the, the fire fuel that's located there, and that's become an annual event for us. So those folks that live in the estates or, or bordered by that. Should feel a little bit of, of comfort knowing that annually, those crews are going to go in and clear out that area. And you'll see them, they're there this week. So you'll see a fire truck out there, and that, those are those Gabalon crew members from Solidad Prison. The other thing I wanted to pass along is there's been some concern along the airport fence line. The work that Ron has done over, across Rosita, on the west side of Rosita. Has been cleared out. A lot of people are, are very happy with that, as well as along the, the park, the green belt that's along the park. The airport just recently approved, well, they haven't approved it yet, but within their FY twenty-six budget. They have allocated money for crews to go along that fence line and clear out a lot of that vegetation that has accumulated over the years. So the point I'm trying to make is we're in a moderate to high. Area within the city, but also within our surrounding jurisdictions. And I just want fo- folks to know that because of those coordination efforts. On behalf of, of our Public Works Director, our City Manager. Those jurisdictions have stepped up or will step up and help to clear out those areas. So I just wanted to, to make sure everybody was aware of that. And, yeah, that will go a long ways to help mitigate some of the risk that's out there. Okay, so with that, there's no, do we have to vote on that? Or is it, okay, so I'll accept a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. Okay, I'll move on to the next item, which are staff reports and correspondence with, which are in the packet. But before we go on to the next item, we have a City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly. So those of you who have been paying attention, Mike, who's been showing up regularly, we've been working on the housing elements. Long time, very long time. But after several months of back and forth and informal. Reviews with HCD, Denise Duffy and Associates and myself, we've gone back, we've met several times. We've kind of drilled in, we'd met like two months ago with you all and kind of went over what the comments were and what the changes were that we were recommending. So last week, last Friday, we finally got the, well, not the okay. We got the recommendation from HCD that they like what they see, and they want us to submit it formally. So for everybody out there, the, the current version, as it stands, is posted on the website. Laura has done a great job of putting tabs on the website, so it's easy to find. If you just go to the main page, there's a tab right there for Housing Element. You can click on that. It'll take you to everything that you need to see. It's available for a seven-day review and comment period. At the end of that period, we're going to submit it, and then HCD has a sixty-day review period. Claire from HCD is going to try to get it back to us much faster than the sixty days, but we'll see. Because they're swamped, so, but at least in sixty days, we should have something back. I'm hopeful we'll have a, unapproved. Housing element, so we can be done with it, both of it, and actually start implementing it. But if not, if we do get a comment letter back, I'm expecting it to be minimal, and then we'll bring it back and have another joint meeting and talk to you about what that looks like and then finish it up. So it's good news.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, I'll move on to the next item, which is closed session. We actually have two items within closed session. The first is a real property negotiation. The agency negotiators are City Manager and City Attorney. And the parties are the City of Delray Oaks and City Ventures. Under negotiation is price and terms of payment. The other item, it's real property negotiations for the property that's located at eight ninety-nine Rosita, which is the Garden Center. Agency negotiator is our City Manager, and the parties are the City of Delray Oaks and Hana Gardens of Delray Oaks. And under negotiation is price and terms of payment. Before we head into closed session, I'll open it up to the public if there are any public comments on the closed session items. Okay, seeing none? With that, we are adjourned to closed session. Okay, seeing none, with that, we are adjourned to closed session.
Okay, we're reconvening after closed session. I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to both closed session items, updates were given to the council. Council provided direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken.
All right, thank you. Our next city council meeting is Tuesday, June 24th at 6:00 p.m. and we are adjourned. Yes. All right.